First item is a special presentation. First recommendations from Spec Building Feasibility Study for the Albemarle Business Center. Crystal Morpheus will present. Lindsey, you have any comments?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Just a brief overview. As outlined in the City of Albemarle Strategic Plan, economic development is a key priority, particularly the growth of the Albemarle Business Center as a long-term jobs and investment hub. The Spec Building Feasibility Study represents the next logical step in advancing that vision by evaluating how we can increase our competitiveness and better respond to industrial recruitment opportunities. Thanks to our ongoing partnership with Electric Cities, the city received this study at no cost. Electric Cities is a key resource for public power communities like ours, offering strategic support, technical expertise, and programs that strengthen our economic development efforts. Their services, such as a smart site certification, market research, and site readiness planning, help build community capacity and attract private investment. Casey Verberg is here tonight from Electric Cities. And tonight, Crystal Morpheus with Creative EDC will present the study's findings and recommendations. No action is requested this evening, but the presentation will help inform future decisions related to site development and business recruitment. Crystal and I will be available following the presentation to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is that teed up and ready to go, the slides? I'm glad to be back in front of the city council. It's been a few years, but through Electric Cities sponsorship several years ago facilitated the Economic Development Strategic Plan. I think we've done that a couple of times to update through Electric Cities. So it's nice to see some familiar faces and to be back here talking about one of the implementation items out of that strategic plan like Lindsey mentioned. And as she mentioned, this is sponsored by Electric Cities. So make sure to thank Casey this evening and thank her Economic Development Manager, Carl Reese, when you see him. So just as an introduction, I'll just roll down. Just as an introduction, speculative buildings or spec buildings, sometimes they're referred to as shell buildings, because they're just sometimes a shell of a building. It's really an economic development strategy. And I want you to think of it in that way as a strategy. The majority of companies today that are searching for new locations or expanding, they want an existing building for reasons you might think about. It's faster, oftentimes there are less, there's less risk, there's less unknown, more the costs are known. So there's a lot of reasons why they would want an existing building. Unfortunately, it's also the number one reason why North Carolina is eliminated from site selection processes by companies, because our building inventory is much smaller than our site inventory. In fact, around 80% of companies either directly say they want a building or prefer a building. That's over a period of time. I'll show you some of the latest data. But most companies either want or prefer a building. So if you don't have quality industrial buildings available, then you do miss out on a lot of opportunities. We worked with Lindsey's office to determine that in 2024, Albemarle missed 67 opportunities to respond to requests for information from expanding companies because of the lack of quality available industrial buildings. So those missed opportunities are things that we like to track in economic development. So in the Spec Building Feasibility Study, we looked at demand and supply. So again, if you look at the demand side, EDPNC stands for the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, which is our state-level economic development organization. And you'll see here, close to 40% directly want a building, another 25% prefer a building. So really, the majority, again, of expanding companies prefer or want a building.
Wait a minute, before you go on.
Yes.
Go back to that.
Yes, sir.
The way I see that, 37% of the people are interested in a site.
Yes.
38% in the building, 25% either one, which what that reads to me is that about half the people are looking for sites, half the people are looking for buildings.
Those under the building or site actually prefer a building or would take a site. So you could look at it that way, but most of those under the building or site prefer a building and would take a site if a building is not available to them. So the hat is tipped toward buildings.
Okay. How do we do with those people that will take a site?
So how do, oh, Lindsey will be able to answer.
You say we're behind because we don't have buildings. I'm just trying to clarify this.
Sure. Lindsey will be able to answer the number of maybe inquiries for sites. She may not have that data on hand tonight, but I'm sure she can get that back to you. Is that what you're interested, the number of inquiries for sites?
Yeah. What I'm, what I'm reading from that diagram is that the requests, half of them have been for sites and half of them for buildings. And how have we done for those that are, that are okay with just a site?
I guess I might need a little more clarity with how have we done with, with what you're asking.
Well, we don't, I mean, we're saying that we need to have a, I'm reading ahead, that we've got to have a building.
Right.
Yet half the people are only looking for a site. And we've got the sites, how have we done with that?
Well, I'll be happy to provide more. I mean, there's a lot of variables that go into it. Is it a graded site? Is it ready to go? You know, there's a lot more variables that I'll be happy to provide you some follow-up information on.
Okay.
If that'll help. Okay.
It's over 120 or if not more. I have that information though, sir. Thank you for that question. And feel free to stop with any other questions along the way. Part of the, the demand side is to look at inquiries to the city of Albemarle by building square feet. And you'll see the most often requested square footage is between 100,000 and 200,000 square feet. We've got some more in the smaller range, and then they kind of get a little less as we go into the higher range. So again, the most requested range is 100,000 to 200,000 square feet. It's very similar to at the state level in terms of requested buildings. You'll see the, the square footage requested the most at the state level is 100,000 to 200,000 square feet. And again, it's smaller as you get larger. And we have some square footage in the 20 to 50, as well as the 50 to 100. The 100,000 to 200,000 square foot is the most requested range at the state level. Another thing that we look in the demand side is what is the ceiling height. Oftentimes, communities will have available industrial buildings, but they're at a much lower ceiling height. If you think about the manufacturing equipment that was put into buildings, sometimes in the 1940s, 50s, or 60s, even 70s, those ceiling heights were sometimes very low. I come from a community where we had a lot of textile companies and those ceilings may have been, you know, 14 or 16 feet, where today, modern manufacturing really requests much higher ceiling heights. So you see here, a lot of requests to Albemarle for the 24 to 26 feet, and then right there, the 30 to 32 feet. And if you look at the state requests across the state, the most often requested ceiling height is 30 to 32. That's a very common height that we're seeing. It allows a lot of flexibility for different types of manufacturing uses, where some of the small, lower ceiling heights may be more specialized to a particular manufacturing sector rather than more broad across the advanced manufacturing sector. This may be a little hard to read on the screen, but in your packet, we also turned to Stanley County and asked them the types of companies that they are seeing inquiries from. And you'll see, it's really very broad. General manufacturing is 61%. That means the client probably did not indicate a specific sector on their requests for information. But you see otherwise, a pretty broad sector, which means there's a lot of interest, not just from one type of manufacturing sector, but from a broad group to Stanley County. And if we look at those industry sectors by the state level, the top eight sectors, North Carolina continues to see a lot of interest from automotive companies. We're in that automotive corridor in the southeast. We saw a lot of energy companies in 2023 and 2024, or energy-related projects, I should say. And then you'll see some of the other top sectors at the state level. So then we took a look at the supply side. So if the demand side has been predominantly for 100,000 to 200,000 square feet, got a lot of buildings in the 24 to 26-foot ceiling height, 30 to 32, and then a wide variety of industry sectors, we also wanted to look at the supply side. This is a region, a region around Albemarle. So we drew a radius around to look at what buildings would be competitive to a building in this market. You see lots of smaller buildings and very few larger buildings as we get over to the larger end. And you'll see buildings by ceiling height. Again, a lot of smaller, lower ceiling height buildings, fewer in the higher ceiling heights as we go across the region. And so as we summarize this, under building specifications, we look at the request to the ratio of opportunities here. And there's a lot of opportunity, again, in that 100,000 to 200,000 square foot building size and the 30 to 32-foot ceiling height. You'll see that ratio as being more competitive in terms of market opportunity, both at the state level and if you look at the regional.
What is the region?
The region is like a one-hour drive time around Albemarle. So if we drop the pen.
So there are 400 buildings available within a 50-mile radius of?
A one-hour drive time, so about 60 miles or so. Yes. Yeah. But most of those buildings are on the very small side with low ceiling height. Yeah. So when we looked at the opportunities of where to place a building in Albemarle, of course, you have the Albemarle Business Center, which is an Electric Cities smart site. There's been a lot of research and due diligence on this site. By that, I mean, there's been Phase One geotechnical studies, but there have been site plans. Of course, you are very familiar with this park. This is the conceptual design layout for the business center. And you know, it's already fully served with utilities. Of course, there is a road through, there is curb, a lot of curb appeal with the landscaping that's gone through. So very appealing, very appealing industrial park there.
Back up though on that. Distance to a four-lane?
Yes.
I-40, less than a mile?
No, I-40 is close by, and then a four-lane is less than a mile.
Oh, 40 to 5.
Yeah. It's not I-40 that's a close, that's close.
Yes, it would be, I'm sorry, I-85, that would be closer, yes.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, thank you for that. So the, the conceptual site plans for the business park, Concept A, if you'll notice the difference between Concept A and Concept B, if you look to the bottom and to the right, there are four tracts of land at that cul-de-sac. That Concept A has those four laid out as individual tracts. And then if I flip to Concept B, you'll see those and the other two there made into one large, one large development opportunity. So the difference between Concept A and Concept B is that very large opportunity for one large user at the bottom right, that'd be the southeastern quarter, corner of the site. And I'll flip back to the top, there's actually several parcels there that'll be combined into site Concept B. So we looked at the opportunity of where a building could be placed in this park. We recommended a location next to that grouping of sites. So that location there, as you would enter the park on the right, does a few things. One, it preserves those tracts of land that could be combined for one single large user, so it doesn't impact the difference between Concept Plans A and B. It also preserves the site that is along the road to the southwestern corner. That would be highway visibility, and that might, site might be a little more attractive to a company. It also would give, putting it, just as you go into the park on the right, would be nice, kind of a marketing advantage if someone pulled into the park to see that, to see that site. There is a very small graded site as you go on that road to the left, but that would only accommodate about a 25,000-square-foot building, a whole lot smaller than what our study said would be ideal for a spec building development. So the recommendation would be that site, just as you turn on the road to the right, is the recommended location.
For 150?
So what we like to do with spec buildings is have room, at least for them to double in size. So what we've laid out there, this is a new design for that site, would allow for 100,000 square feet that can be doubled to 200,000 square feet. Companies always want to have expansion potential and opportunity. So this is how 100,000 square feet could lay out, doubled to 200,000 square feet with the parking and, and truck dock access around the building. We would recommend a tilt-up concrete structure. We see a lot of those being marketed in other locations, more appealing than those that are of mixed facade, like a masonry mixed with metal. Of course, your expansion wall, in this case, on the right-hand side of 100,000 square feet, would probably be a metal wall that would then easily expand over to 200,000 square feet. So these specifications were offered by general contracting companies that do a lot of industrial development, as some of the specifications they're seeing in the marketplace right now. So this is a rendering of how that building, fully built out to full 200,000 square feet, could look. And if this is looking at the front, the 100,000-square-foot initial would be on the right and the expansion on the left. And this is just another view from the kind of backside of the building, of how that 200,000 square foot building could lay out. So, so the recommendation, and now the, the cost, and then, then development partnership opportunities. So to, to finish the grading on that site and do the site preparation work is about 1.8 million. And then when you add in all the other contingencies, that goes to about 2.5 million. When talking to the land planning firm that did this order of magnitude cost, they described this as average to slightly above average for a site of this size in this region. The building itself, based on standard construction costs for a shell building, if you will, so there's no outfit inside, $6 million of construction, so total of about $8.5 million. And that is much more expensive than it used to be a few years ago because of the escalation of construction costs and overall development costs. We do offer some examples in the report of best practices for spec building programs. Wilson, North Carolina, has one of the best in the state. Wilson Properties is the development arm of their economic development organization. And they have sort of like a revolving program for spec buildings. They build one, it sells, and they immediately launch into building another one. Their economic development staff there will tell you, they land two or three companies for every building that they build, because a company will be attracted to Wilson because of the available building. They will visit the building, and they'll say, well, the building looks really great, but maybe this site over here, or maybe this other property. And so it really is a marketing strategy, if you think about that, an economic development strategy. But Wilson would be one of the best practice programs. There are other communities in the state that have stellar spec building programs, like Catawba County has built several in partnership with the private sector. Sometimes there's a city-county, private sector partnership, public-private partnership. And then we also do cite some assistance that could be, that could support a building in Albemarle. For example, the Department of Commerce has a revolving loan program that some communities tap into to support spec building development. And as you know, Golden Leaf has some programs to help with site development as well. And then I did want to mention in the report, there are a few examples of private companies that do work in North Carolina in small-to-medium-sized markets through public-private partnerships. And those public-private partnerships can take a, their range is a continuum. In some communities, the public sector, like you have done, prepares the site, grades the site, may even have the infrastructure and other things available, like you have on your property. The private sector will build the building, and then in partnership, they work to market the property. So you can think about public-private partnerships as one of the opportunities to help with spec building development. So some of the next steps, you can already promote, you have this wonderful building graphic, you have development costs, you have a certified site. So you have a lot of information now just to promote to the private sector and to companies. And this is just one more step of information that you can share with them about the development opportunities in Albemarle. As you start working toward, what are those partnership opportunities with the private sector, with some of the funding partners, like the Department of Commerce, with Golden Leaf, with other types of funding partners? What opportunities are they there? Again, reaching out to the private sector. And then continue to refine the concept, refine the development, the renderings of it, refine the cost estimates, and then work forward to, to the actual building development. There are other examples in North Carolina of communities that have ongoing spec building programs, be glad to share those with you. And again, think of it as an economic development strategy, as one more tool that you have to market to companies that, over the last year, you had 67 missed opportunities, and this would allow you one more marketing opportunity for those companies. So with that, I'll be glad to answer additional questions.
Would you share a little bit more about Wilson Properties?
Yeah.
And what do they have that other municipalities don't have that allows them to do what they're doing?
Sure. So I will say that in the beginning, they, they had a commitment to fund the spec buildings as a program, not a one-off. So they seeded a fund in Wilson Properties, their nonprofit economic development corporation's and arm of their, their development entity. And the whole purpose was seeding it so that when one sold, money went right back into it, and it was an ongoing program. Sometimes communities will do this as just a one-off initiative, but their real success, I think, is their long-term commitment to it as an economic development strategy. And again, as they sell it, money rolls right back in, and they've got the plans to do the next one, and the next one, and the next one. And I think that, that approaching it like a strategy, because sometimes one will sit on the market for 10 months, the next time it may sit on the market 24 months, the next time it may be 18 months. But when you have that long-term vision, I think that's what's made them most successful.
And in Wilson, as a follow-up to that, is there a park?
Excuse me?
Is there a development park? Is there a business park?
Yes, yes. They have a couple of different industrial parks that they have built these buildings in over time.
So multiple parks?
Yes. I think they've built something like maybe eight buildings over time. Yes, it's just an ongoing.
Over, Crystal, over how many years? I guess, no, I'll hold you to it.
Okay. If I had to guess, I mean, probably 15 years.
Well, and, and we look at, our park was, we copied the Monroe Executive Park at the airport.
Yeah.
And it's been there 25 years, and it's still not full. Okay. And Monroe?
It's just like if, when you, when a home builder is building a new residential development, there'll be a model home. It's kind of shows what the possible is. Not, in your region as well, years ago, Lincoln County, the development arm there had a partnership with the Keith Corporation that built spec building after spec building. If you go up 321, you can see their parks are full. And that was through a partnership. The City of Meben, Samet Corporation, has built building after building in that area as well. And so there are different ways to structure the partnerships.
But it was a partnership, a private-public partnership, and not just using public money?
That's right. There, there are some communities that, and I'll tell you that the advantage to using all public money is that your motivation for the spec building is different than the private sector. So when a private developer just builds an industrial building, their motivation is to sell it or lease it. Your motivation is capital, as much capital as you can get in that, because you want tax revenue, and you want jobs, and you want well-paying jobs. So the public-private partnership is a way to bring together those interests. But sometimes you'll see in communities that are fast-growing, like the Charlotte Market or the Raleigh Market, or here's a really good opportunity, or a good example, Greer, South Carolina. Developers there want to build warehouse after warehouse after warehouse, and those are not capital-intensive, and generally speaking, not well-paying jobs. And so then there's a difference in the interest of the outcome.
When, on the, on the other side of this, if we build it, will they come? And now, now, what I'm saying is, I'm thinking of workforce. We don't, we have a very low unemployment rate. So where do we get the people? If we build this, will the workers come?
Yeah. Yeah.
So sir, we tend to pull from a 45-minute commute time. And so all of the studies that we look at are attracting not only local residents who maybe have either left the workforce because they could not find the type of job that they're looking for. So we, we consider the underemployed, the unemployed but available to work, as well as those in Montgomery County, Anson County, Cabarrus County, Moore, Union County, those, those areas. So if that helps answer your question, we, we assume with the right-paying job that the people will come for a job, just like citizens will travel from Albemarle to Charlotte, they will go the other way.
And also consider the, the need to have properties for your expanding business. A good example, a very unique spec building development was in Transylvania County. They had an existing company that needed to expand. There were no buildings, and so they were faced with the possibility of leaving Transylvania County for a building somewhere else. And the community, the company needed 30,000 square feet, and they were adding jobs. So the community built a 50,000-square-foot building, 30,000 of it leased to Sylvan Sport, the other 20,000 was spec space that Sylvan Sport could eventually grow into. So you can think of it as a business attraction, obviously, but also think of it as a business retention and expansion tool as well.
Further questions?
That's a beautiful thing you've done, that, that report.
The rendering is awesome. That's, O'Brien Atkins, they're the firm that did the, the conceptual plan A and B of the park.
You don't have 200 parking spaces there.
Yeah, that's right. There's, let's see, there's some cars there for sure to go to work. Well, I want to thank the board for your interest in economic development in general, for following the strategic plan of the city, also for the investments that you have made in the business park, continued to make in the business park. And Albemarle has always been a leader in this region in economic development, and so I just appreciate that this board has continued interest in initiatives like this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Mayor, before we go on, there is something going on with our PA system. The guys at the end are hearing, hearing, hearing from the box in front of them as well as from what's there. And I can hear it sitting here, so.
Make sure that your sound is kind of red Xed out on the screen.
Mine does, that one does.
Okay. This one doesn't either, hold on.
Mute the sound.
That's where it is, right here. I can hear it.
Moving on to approval of minutes, Council approves 7/7/25 regular session, 7/7/25 closed session to prevent premature disclosure of an award, consult with attorney, economic development, and personnel.
motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve, second by Councilmember Aldridge.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We have no public hearings, and I did not see anyone, but just a reminder, the zoning that was scheduled for Knollwood Circle has been removed to August the 18th. Just make sure everybody knew that. I don't think there's anybody here to speak, I wanted to make sure. Moving to public comments, I have two unannounced delegations. Catherine Russell, 42 Elm Street in Baden. You come up?
Good evening. My name is Catherine Hinkle-Russell. And I want to go ahead and introduce myself first to give you an idea of where I'm coming from. Let me scoot this down just a little bit. Martha, if I get into a rabbit hole, now you bring me back, okay?
You've got three minutes now.
I know, that's why. I got a little bit to say, but I need to say it. I'm actually here to introduce you to a movement I've started called Gratitude for Veteran Services. I call it a movement because it's not a group, it's not a club, it's not, it'll be a nonprofit, not government-affiliated, simply just want to speak to the cities and the county about embracing the idea of making sure our veterans are receiving the gratitude and appreciated they're due. So I'll give you a little bit of my background so you understand. I'm a native of Stanley County. I work over here at Central in the Exceptional Children's Department. I kind of have my hand in a little bit of everything in Stanley County. If there's, there's a, I'm a big advocate for veterans, for mental health, for EC kids, anybody who needs a voice, or anybody, I feel, who needs to be appreciated, who's not. I've been serving veterans in multiple capacities for over a decade now. I was in the 2908 Auxiliary until that kind of dismantled. And now I'm a member of a public, a public group, not government-affiliated, but members, friends of veterans, excuse me, yes, friends of veterans. And it started in Rowan County. It's just a group of people who like to go out and maybe play bingo with, with veterans at the VA, maybe go cut up some watermelon, maybe take veterans' Christmas gifts, all kind of things. But the small things that. kind of things, but the small things that make a big difference. So I'm now a part of that group. And now, my, even more so, I'm interested or passionate because my son is in the Navy. So now I'm thinking ahead, okay, when my son retires, I want him to be getting what I've been trying to give, give people for a long time, and what I've tried to get the community to give people for a long time. So my actual mission on Facebook, and I'm on Facebook, I aim to foster a county that acknowledges and demonstrates the significance of expressing appreciation and gratitude to our veterans for their services, which right now is taking $0. You can shake somebody's hand and thank them. The biggest thing right now is that I'm trying to recruit people to be in the Oakboro Veterans Day Parade, Veterans Day. Its attendance was, has been very poor. I know I'm going over three minutes, I'm almost done. And I'm trying to encourage people to go to it and be in it. I'm speaking at all, all the council meetings. I've spoken to principals about getting children involved and providing educational opportunities for the kids about veterans and what they do and how important they are. But I just wanted to introduce that, kind of what I'm doing, so that I can get the support of our community. And like I said, sometimes it's the simple things. If you see a veteran, thank them for their service, shake their hand. There's a lot of guys and gals out here with the veteran hat. So if y'all don't mind, I'm going to, I didn't, my printer ran out of ink, so Martha, so I'm going to email you a couple of things. If you don't mind just sharing with everybody, that'd be great.
I'm going to have to stop you now.
Yeah. That was it, I was done.
Thank you.
And it's called gratitude, gratitude?
Gratitude for Veteran Services.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just FYI, this is Paul Hinkle's daughter.
Megan Almond, 5278 Rushing Road, Stanfield.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Megan Almond, and I am here tonight as a concerned citizen. I am here, I am not here to represent the board that I serve on, but to voice my own opinions and concerns. Tonight, I'm asking you to take a courageous and compassionate step to rescind the previous vote opposing the rezoning of a half-acre parcel from residential to medical classification that Faith Alive Ministry owns. I fully acknowledge that this vote was made after public input, and I respect the process that brought us here. But when the outcome of that process results in children sleeping in DSS offices, missing school, and going without the care that they need, it's time to pause, reflect, and reconsider. This rezoning is not about commercial development or disruption to neighborhoods. It's about allowing a nonprofit the ability to provide essential services, emergency shelter, trauma care, stability to children who have no place to go. Until more foster families step up to the plate, the current reality is unacceptable. Children in crisis are being housed in offices that are not meant for living, sometimes for days and weeks at a time. The lack of proper facilities isn't just uncomfortable, it's harmful. It disrupts their schools, delays in critical treatment, and deepens their trauma. The nonprofit proposing to use this space is not driven by profit, but by purpose. They are prepared to serve, but they cannot do that without your support and correct zoning designation. I'm asking this council, with full recognition of the previous vote, to show the flexibility and leadership this moment requires, rescind the earlier decision and revote in favor of rezoning this land to medical use, so that these children can receive the care and shelter that they urgently need. This is not about reversing a decision lightly, it's about correcting a decision that despite good intentions, has real and harmful consequences. We often speak of doing what's best for our community, and tonight, that means doing what's best for the most vulnerable among us. Please revisit the vote, let's stand on the side of compassion and responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Council moving to administrative reports, your department reports are, yes, sir? You signed up? Okay, I need to see, you have something signed up? I do not have anything signed up.
You have to sign up.
If council makes a motion to let you come up, I'll entertain it.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to let, three minutes, Mr. Howes.
Thank you, council. My name is Roger Cowell, we're RA Solutions in Albemarle, North Carolina. And I come to you to present a, a presentation for, um, Quarry, the Center on Rural Innovation, a partnership between Stanley County, more specifically, the city of Albemarle, and hopefully the, um, county commissioners, and, um, working with them. The, um, organization, the organization Quarry, Center on Rural Innovation, um, it will help establish a tech committee that will help drive our county's economic growth and digital, um, future. The committee will focus on developing a substantial local tech econ, ecosystem by identifying workforce development and digital upscale opportunities, attracting remote jobs in tech-based companies, supporting local entrepreneurships and innovation with VC funding, and leveraging broadband infrastructure to support our, um, digital community. Right now, we have a strong, um, manufacturing base, we have Stanley Community College, we have CT programs in the, in the college. What we are lacking is we have VC and startup fundings. We don't actually have those, we don't have a lot of them around here. We don't have, um, no robust tech startup ecosystem and through tech employees relative to the urban peers, um, like Rockingham, who just got the Amazon and, um, Amazon Work Service Program. Partnering with Quarry will help build our VC capital and also help, um, with our tech workers in the community. We would do this by, um, creating incubators and coworking space, workforce training, certification, school alignment, and, and leveraging on the Quarry, on Quarry's network and our local own ecosystem. And the outcomes will hopefully build 100 to 200 jobs in the area, broaden our tech base through innovation and driven growth. I think we have a special, um, need that we could do it here because we have, um, a lot of growth when it comes to agrotech, and also this would help, um, making us a more tech-friendly area, would help us field that business park y'all looking for. We might be able to grow a business here that will fill the park instead of actually outsourcing looking for. So, um, what, what I'm, the call to action is for, um, I would like the county to, to, first, consider, uh, help creating a tech committee and then funding it with Quarry so we could do the assessment, and we could bring the assessment back to Stanley County, not only to the city of Albemarle, but to our, um, county, to actually, um, come up with strategic ideas to, um, build in the community.
Thank you. What's your address for the record?
304 Leonard Avenue, Albemarle, North Carolina.
Thank you, Mr. Howes.
And y'all actually have some, um, information that I, that was emailed to you, too, so you could look at, research Quarry and see the rest of my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your departmental reports are in your agenda, questions?
Just one, um, dealing with public housing. Have we, the air quality was started on the 14th, are they done? For those 20?
Mayor, do you have a report on that? Or Renee? Hey, Renee, if you'll come, come forward to the microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I did receive a verbal confirmation from our maintenance supervisor today, right before I came here. The vendor will be emailing the completed report of the results tomorrow in the morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor, I don't have anything as far as technical in the, um, department reports, just one typographical error in the HR report, under the section for terminations, one of the police officers, we have him listed as the department, being under the fire department, so just correct that.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 7B, the Police Department Annual Report, I believe Chief Manley is going to present that. Mr. Clark, you have anything?
Yes, sir. Brian, thanks for being here to make your presentation tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Michael, Pro Temp Paul, and members of the council. Tonight, I'm presenting the amazing work of the men and women of the Albemarle Police Department in our annual report. I know that you usually receive this report in May, however, there was a little delay into the massive undertaking of our records management change. And we also wanted to ensure that all of our case closure data was accurate. We have that information now, and I am pleased to share it with you. This presentation will be a fairly high-level look at our, our work, and I do ask that, that any questions are asked af, after the presentation. The Albemarle Police Department has 52 sworn officers, which is the full allotment given by, by council. We are very fortunate to have seven civilian personnel, and as you all know, we are the only accredited agency in Stan, Stanley County, and one of only 75 in the state of North Carolina. The commission, or CLIA, is the gold standard for law enforcement professionals. Now, I'm going to walk you through some of the high, highlights of our crime stats. The Albemarle Police Department utilizes the national incident-based reporting system known as NiBRS. NiBRS captures details on each single incident to include victim, offender, and offense data. In 2004, there was once again a steady progress in reducing the overall crime in the city of Albemarle. Total crime in Albemarle reduced by 7.5% and a five-year average of 21%. In 2024, we did have a slight increase in violent crime, but I do draw your attention to the 12% reduction in property crime. The, these result, these, excuse me, these results are a large part due to the proactive work of our men and women of, of the police department and our partners in, in the community. We are, we have implemented data-driven crime reduction strategies, and we are focusing on patrols and partnerships with our law enforcement agencies. Now, we're going to discuss some of our clay, our case closure. Albemarle Police Department's Criminal Investigation Division successfully cleared with arrests both of the city's homicides in 2024. The Albemarle Police Department was able to outperform the national average for case closure in nearly all areas, with the exception of rape, arson, and aggravated assault. These crimes are extremely complex in nature, and it, and it is to be noted that we do have low amounts of these crimes. In order to increase our clearance rates, the Albemarle Police Department strengthens its partnership with the Butterfly House and the Esther House. These organizations assist individuals that experience domestic violence and sexual assault. In 2024, the Albemarle Police Department responded to more than 27,000 calls for service. More than 17,000 calls for service came from, from our citizens. Albemarle Police Officers initiated nearly 5,000 calls. Officer-initiated calls ranged from downtown patrols, follow-ups, getting out with suspicious people, or actually responding to members of, of our community flagging them down. Our officers initiated just shy of 5,000 traffic stops within the year of 2024. Overall, calls for, for service remained constant compared to 2024, excuse me, 2023. In 2024, the Albemarle Police Department's Internal Affairs Division investigated 42 total complaints, with 11 of those complaints coming from members of our community. This number represents less than one, excuse me, half, represents half of 1% of all of the officer interactions with members of our community. As we are continuing our commitment to accountability, the Albemarle Police Department additionally investigated 25 uses of forces, 14 employee motor vehicle collisions, and 10 vehicle pursuits. The Albemarle Police Department encourages our, our community to provide us feed, feedback. We encourage them to reach out to us, whether by telephone, on our webpage, or if we see one of our officers, stop them and talk to them, and give us their, their observations. Traffic enforcement continues to be a point of emphasis for, for the Albemarle Police Department. We have heard from our community that speeding needs to be addressed, and, and we've taken action. In 2024, the Albemarle Police Department issued 318 citations for speeding, which is 125% increase over the previous year. Our commitment to the governor's highway safety program shined through with our officers' proactive work. They conducted nearly 5,000 traffic stops in 2024. They, they conducted those stops, which also accounted for 63 DWI arrests and 34 citations for reckless driving. I want to also recognize that we added a new police K-9 in 2024. This second K-9 increased our ability to provide customer service to our citizens and utilize this K-9 for narcotics detection and patrol work. This dog went, went through extensive field training prior to its deployment. Our community outreach, the Albemarle Police Department engaged with, with our community in various ways. We attended Coffee with a Cop events, the Downtown Fall Festival, the Christmas Parade, the Holidays Hero Shopping, Sweets and Stories with Stanley County Partnership, the Special Olympics, and numerous back-to-school events. We are also proud to partner again in 2024 with Safe Kids and the Partnership for, for Children for Our Community Night Out. More than 1,000 people attended the Community Night Out in 2024, and we are looking forward to planning and orchestrating the 2025 Night Out. I'm pleased to report that the city of Albemarle experienced no fatal overdoses. There was a total of 46 overdose cases, which is an increase compared to the previous year. We are committed to work collaboratively with our community partners, including the NC, the NC Harm Reduction to address this issue. We remain vigilant and ready. The Albemarle Police Department actively participates in Operation Medicine Drop. I have a call that if our citizens have unused or expired prescriptions, bring it to one of our locations and drop it off so it doesn't get into the hands of individuals that don't, don't need to use it. During the calendar year of 2024, we took in just shy of 200,000 grams of medicine. That is a substantial amount for, for a city our, our size. In 2024, we had a significant increase in applications to join the city of Albemarle. We had 267 applications, which is a six, or 78% increase. I want to thank all of you for your continued support to allowing us to recruit competitive I will now distribute a, a hard copy and allow our citizens to know that this will be posted on the police department's website as soon as this, this meeting is over.
Thank you, chief. Council having. Council, have any questions to the chief?
Good job. Just, just one question on some numbers. Uh, in the report on the internal affairs, just to make sure I was looking at it correctly. I know you said you have forty-two total internal affair investigations. And then you listed three different, um, sections, one with twenty-five incidents, one with fourteen, and one with ten. That's forty-nine.
So those are outside and above the. So we actually looked at all of the, um, complaints and actually initiated forty, or thirty-one in internal investigations, that would not part of those twenty-five, fourteen.
Okay, cause just looking at it, you know, I'm sure it's, yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Right, right. Good job. Thank you. Good job, though.
Yeah, follow up, two things. Number one, I know you took this picture earlier than June, cause on there it says eighty-two degrees, and we hadn't seen eighty-two degrees at ten-thirty in the morning in a long time.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, where are we about being? And I, I should have looked at it in the, um, not just in this report, but in the departmental reports about being staffed now. Where are we there?
So we currently have six students in the Stanley County B- BLET program. We are currently in the application process with four laterals from agencies within that forty-five mile span. So we actually have ten in the, ten total candidates with the potential to have those hired and on staff by Ja- January.
And will that bring us up to?
So that'll bring us close. Once we finish up our lu- lieutenant selection process, that will have those additional kind of so- sergeants to move and all that stuff, so we'll have two. But we are re- receiving applications, two and three every day.
And so the current class of BLET will graduate into the fit, into the calendar year?
Yes, ma'am, and then four- fourteen weeks after that, they will go to so- solar patrol.
Further questions?
Uh, Chief, I just want to say good job, nice presentation. Thank you for the level of professionalism you brought to the agency, and, uh, keep up the good work. Thank you.
One last thing, Chief. I don't, I don't know what's been going on, but that's a major improvement to get seventy-eight percent increase in the number of people that apply to the A P D in two thousand twenty-four. You know, what, what do you attribute that to?
So I can't take the credit. I have an amazing staff. Um, we have worked diligently with our, our partners at the Sta- Stanley Community College. Uh, I did leverage some par- partnerships outside of this area, um, that has attracted several candidates from outside of here, uh, some from Wilmington, some, some from Beaville, and they have moved here to become part of thi- this organization.
Good.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Council, moving to number nine, consider road closure for the annual Sugar Hill Reunion. This is on the consent agenda.
Motion approved consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Drive. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving to eleven, eleven A Street, pavement maintenance budget and recommendations for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Mr. Clark, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Ross is coming forward, just a reminder that council's directive to staff has been traditionally that staff determine what streets we can do, as many streets as we can resurface uh, in a annual fiscal year, um, to get the, the most, um, return for our money and to get as many streets as paved as possible. Council, however, has expressed an interest in doing a larger project, um, with, in this case, what I have asked Ross to look at is a full-depth reclamation project. It's, uh, it, so what I had asked Ross to do further was to look at the worst streets and to come up with a recommendation for city council based on, um, annual maintenance. And Sir Ross is going to go through that with you. There are challenges to each of, uh, the three that he is recommending that are in the, in the most dire, uh, need of re-surfacing and, and repaving. So with that, uh, Ross, I'll turn that over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Um, again, you all have an attachment in the memo that I provided on the agenda. Um, up for discussion, obviously, but, um, what I've done is I've tried to break it out into three components for this year's annual pavement maintenance plan. Um, for the first component, which, uh, Mr. Clark said it was requested by council to try to add one large F D R project or full-depth reclamation project, uh, in this year's budget. Based on, uh, my recommendation, talking with my street staff, uh, we came up with three top streets off of the many streets that require full-depth reclamation in our last pavement assessment. Uh, just for your recollection, in two thousand twenty-one was our last pavement assessment. At that time, we had about ten million dollars worth of streets that required full-depth reclamation. Um, several streets on that list, but, um, going back to the study, what we decided as staff were a couple of things. One was the most visible and the most impactful streets that we get the most complaints about, but also the ones that the staff has to go out to, uh, often to patch potholes over and, and repeatedly. So with that being said, staff's recommendation, as you can see in your memo, would be Snugs Park Road. Uh, one thing that we talked about heavily as a staff, Snugs Park, if most people aren't familiar with the territory, doesn't seem like it's very impactful. Um, there's not many residences on that road. There's only a couple, matter of fact, there might be one commercial property, two commercial properties. One's a parking lot, the other one is a business, uh, in this section of Snugs Park. But the main thing to consider, it is a major thoroughfare to a large subdivision. Um, and, and two, that is our most common, uh, recurring call-in for complaints to patch that street. It is in very bad shape. So that's one of the reasons why we did recommend that one. It would probably be the most least impactful of a project to try to manage, uh, when it comes to the construction project itself. Uh, so taking that into consideration, uh, that is why we chose that to be the first one.
Can I ask you before you go further? Staff is comfortable knowing that we are probably going to tear up a lot of that roadway, not the main road, but along the sides, putting in a new water line and heavy construction on that road? You're still comfortable with doing this?
That information was just shared with me today. Um, so that's, from what I understand, that is still a plan in progress and has not been determined. Uh, so I'm thinking, again, you all may be privy to more information than I have, uh, with my department. I, I don't know how long and far out in the future that project would be. So again, um, that's, that was, that was information that was shared with me today.
That's right. It, it's Sir Ross, you were looking at this purely from the worst street.
Yes.
Um, so yes, and one of the things that the mayor had called to my attention earlier today was that there's a possibility that U S fifty-two waterline project may be directed down Snugs Park Road, but the engineering's not been completed or even started on the project yet. So that is something city council does need to be aware of because it will be impactful on that road if there's cons- considerable amount of construction traffic. But as Ross said, we don't have a timeline for that, and the engineering's not been complete. But it's a valid concern expressed by the mayor.
Yeah, so you remember that Adam Kiker was here and just asked us to do that through a design build project. So that's one of the, the three design build projects that we're looking at doing. Uh, the other wa- obviously was the raw water line, and the other one is the one that we just bid out. It's out, pointing out the bid again, the, um, solids plant at the.
Sludge dewater.
Yeah, sludge dewater. Um, I'm not going to tell you which one to do, and I don't, I don't want council to tell you which one to do. We've already allowed, relied on staff. I just wanted to make sure you had that in consideration when you were making that decision.
I just have a question. So, and I may be completely off. Today's July twenty-first. Am I right that we normally, when we're doing, or in the past, when we've done pavement, big pavement projects, we do that in the colder winter or the colder weather?
Typically, historically, what we've done is, you know, we have a process, obviously. You know, we, we try, we get our new budget year. We have our plan put together on what streets that council would approve. Then I would go to our engineer, design specifications, the bid packages would be put out.
Right.
We would advertise, you know, the past few times we've had to advertise these pavement projects, we've had to re-advertise because of the lack of bidders. So with that process, typically, it does carry over into spring before the work can be completed.
Right.
I think this past year, we had the bid ready, or bids ready by February. Um, so, you know, with that timeline being said, we are ahead of right now.
Okay.
Compared to the past. But again, it would be up to a contractor and whenever we would put it up for bid. You have to remember, in the dead winter, some paving can be done. It all depends on weather, you know?
And tha- and the reason I was asking is it seems like, it seemed like to me that we were ahead of the.
We are, we are ahead of schedule. I was asked to try to push this faster, so.
But that's a good thing, ahead of schedule, and even if whatever we decide, it's not going to start next, I mean, it wouldn't start for six or eight or ten or twelve weeks, number one. A- and where are we on that? Wi- have we gone out for bid yet on that, um, on that potential stop out on the Snugs? Well, on the fifty-two water plant?
Last I heard, it was going to be a couple more months or so before we were ready to go out for the.
That's right.
Take bids for design.
And in this case, Ross, for Snugs Park Road, you don't have a whole lot of utilities in the road right now. Is that?
The, as far as stormwater infrastructure that I'm aware of, there might be, in this section of Snugs Park that we would mill and, or that we would full-depth reclamation, there might be six culvert pipes. One of the culverts is a, what we would call a double-barrel culvert pipe. It's two twenty-four inch pipes. It's one of the main ditches that runs under. Uh, now, as far as utilities go, I'm not sure who's, I don't think Brian's here. I know there's a water line that runs down some portion of Snugs Park. I don't know if it's the whole entire way, or if it just starts closer to Crestview and runs back towards Bethany.
It stopped, it stopped at the last house coming south.
Coming from Bethany to coming, I guess you'd say, south, yes. But so, for that being said, you're right, there is zero, uh, utilities that I'm aware of through that area, except for maybe some storm drain culverts that run under Snugs Park.
Right. And, and the other two streets that were mentioned in your report, if we were to move forward with those, we'd certainly have to do some engineering to realign or replace some sewer laterals, water, um, water laterals, as well as stormwater drainage systems. So that, that would have to be a consideration for engineering as well.
P D Avenue and Montgomery are definitely going to be very impactful. Uh, obviously, you all know that those are two highly traveled streets in the city and probably the most political streets that we hear from, you know, our residents and citizens about how rough they are. So, but yes, those would, you, you're, you are impacting a lot of residential houses. Could be a lot of utilities impacted on those streets as well. So, I mean, I.
So there's a lot of lead, lead time leading up, no pun intended, leading up to actual full-depth reclamation and resurfacing.
I think, I think the, the project itself and the scope of the work would be still similar, but there's going to be some components to those two streets that would have to be factored in in the, in the scope of work.
Yeah, and that's.
With possible utility repairs and those type of things.
And that's not captured in your numbers. This is just full-depth reclamation.
These numbers were given to us in two thousand twenty-one as engineer estimates. I put that as an asterisk in my memo that these are basically four-year-old pricing. So, um, now, actuality, last year in our, in our bid contract, we came in under what the engineer's price was, but that was for just Mill and Field Streets. For full-depth reclamation, I don't know what the market's bringing now.
Right. So there would be additional costs related to public utilities and, and replacements.
I, I don't, I don't want to say that. I don't, I'm not saying that public utilities would have to go in and replace every s- service. Hopefully, we wouldn't mill as deep as what the laterals are. That's not the case in Mill and Field Street, or, uh, full-depth reclamation streets. Uh, typically, your utilities are deeper than what you're going to be milling. Now, in these cases, who knows how old the infrastructure is and how deep it's been and those type of things.
What, what nobody wants is to redo the full-depth reclamation, have it all back in service, and then public utilities have a water line, sewer line break, and then have to go back into it and crack it open.
That, that's, that's a fair comment, but, I mean, reality is, is any street we have in the city, you're, you could have a water line break, that, you know, you can pave it tomorrow and have a water line break next week. So you just, you can't forecast that. But yes, I mean, that is something to consider.
But this would be the time to replace anything, any, no, no problems.
Anything, yes, it would, it would, we would need to talk with public utilities to see if they've got issues on those streets, just to see if something might need to be replaced beforehand.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, continue on.
So again, with section one of the, um, of the plan, that is definitely something that would have to be contracted out. Uh, our recommendation there would be those three streets. Again, uh, with the information that was shared with me today, I would definitely want to talk with public utilities just to see what their thoughts are and their comments would be. Typically, even with a new installation water line, they're not going to put it in a street. They would get right-of-way or put it off the shoulder of the road. So the impact don't damage in the streets should be minimal if they did that, if that was the plan. But again, without talking to them, I don't know how much right-of-way that we currently have there or if we have enough right-of-way to install a water line all the way down Snugs Park, but that's something we can discuss. Um, section two, um, you can see in your spreadsheets there, that would, this would also be added in the contracted, uh, project scope of work. Uh, we made recommendations based on our, if you all remember, I presented council a five-year street list plan last year. Um, since we're deviating from that five-year plan and adding some different components, I've, I've kind of plucked and prodded some different streets out of that five-year plan to build, uh, the recommended list that would fall into the, the contracted pricing. There, you can see Anderson Road, Mall Springs Road, Adam Drive, and Eford Street. Um, those are pretty heavily traveled roads. Anderson specifically gets a lot of traffic now. That section that you see there coming off the new, um, four-lane twenty-four, twenty-seven through the, the roundabout. Um, Mall Springs is a, is a nice area that, in staff, we did a portion of that this past year. This would just be an ex- extended area for that section. And then Eford Street, uh, is a good stretch that calls for Mill and Field from twenty-four, twenty-seven, I mean, I'm sorry, Highway seventy-three all the way to Highway fifty-two. And again, that's section one, and section two would be all-inclusive in one project cost and one bid. What I've recommended for the, the third component of the plan would be what we would be able to do within-house city crews. Um, as you can see, the list there for Lakeview Road, Heath Street, Cannon Avenue, Chestnut Avenue, Owen Wood, and Richardson. These streets would be subject to probably what our engineering cost and bids would come in, uh, just to make sure we're going to fall within budget. I would like to, before city staff tried to tackle any of these streets, I would like to try to get our engineering designs done, specifications, put it up for bid, see what the bid costs come in. Then we would know if we've got the estimated two hundred and twenty, or two hundred and twelve thousand dollars left to be able to do those streets in-house.
Ross, have you talked to our engineer lately? I was talking to a, uh, asphalt company this past week, and they said more and more people are going away from the full-depth reclamation and just grinding out and putting down a base and then a, a top coat of asphalt. What are you seeing now? What is your engineer seeing now?
There's, full-depth reclamation is still a, a highly sought-after, um, way of rebuilding poor streets. I mean, again, it all goes down to the base of our streets. We've got a lot of streets here in the city of Albemarle that are tar and gravel, you know, for, for years. That's what they'd put down, and, and you just don't have the sub-base underneath it to, to hold a substantial street. We have subdivisions, um, Crystal Village. You know, when they were developed, we didn't have design standards back then, and, you know, we, we weren't really overseeing development projects back in those days to where people could just grade red dirt and then put a little bit of gravel on top and two inches of asphalt. And now we're seeing these streets just dilapidated. So it, um, it goes back to a full-depth reclamation as a process of, of grinding ten inches of your base, adding cement to it, giving you a good firm base, and then putting asphalt on top so you'll have a lifetime twenty, thirty-year street. Um, I don't know what asphalt company you're talking to about that, but I'm sure there's probably a practice of just milling up, putting a little bit of base, but it, it depend. I, I think a lot of it depends on the factors. Depends on the traffic, the volume of traffic you're going to put on that, the load. Um, you know, if it's highly, um, traveled by heavy trucks or heavy equipment, or if it's just a small residential street that might have three houses on it. You have to ke- keep all those factors in play.
Thank you, just for, uh, two things. Um, number one, I think just by everything that you've provided tonight, folks need to hear that that's under, what, whichever way we go, or whichever way you go, that's under four miles total. Under four miles for one point three million dollars. And how many miles of road do we have in Albemarle?
A hundred and twenty-two roughly, approximately.
We have a hundred and twenty-two miles of pavement. Um, and that's under four.
Yeah, for, for reference, last year, just in the project that we just completed, between the contracted, um, project that we did with N J R and what we did within-house labor, we completed four point four miles of streets in our budget. With this plan, we are looking. With this plan, we are looking at, let's see, um.
It's just under four.
It, it's, it's right at.
Right at four.
3.8, I think, maybe.
For 1.3 million.
But a lot of that is absorbed because of the cost of the full depth reclamation.
Right. So go back though. The last, we are developing all of this from that study, the last study that was done in 21. We're doing, we're looking at that for cost. We're looking, that's what these comparisons are, as well as where it needs to be done. I'm going out on a limb when I say what I'm about to say. But it appears about this, and I'm glad that whoever asks to look at it for some larger areas. It appears that there are three large streets. Um, between 1.2 and, you know, point seven, those three. Snugs Park being 1.2 miles, P D being point seven and Montgomery being point eight five. Yet whichever one gets decided to do full depth this year, not to hold any future council's feet to the fire. But it appears to me that whichever of the three doesn't get done, that we're, that they would be in line to be done next year because they are where they are. Is that a good assumption or not? I'm sorry. You knew I'd ask that probably.
Yeah, uh, again, if you, if you look at the, if you look at the list of our worst streets.
Right.
We have, I get more phone calls, honestly, from some of our residential neighborhoods that, that, than I do for P D Avenue and Montgomery Avenue. I think from a public perspective, P D Avenue and, and Montgomery Avenue, you hear more complaints out in public, but from a day-to-day operations in public works department, Crystal Village, weekly, if not daily, we get phone calls, when are you going to come fix our streets? But those are full depth reclamation streets.
That one is.
Just, just that neighborhood alone is over $2 million to fix, just in those streets in that neighborhood. Because it is, if you drive out there, you can see dirt and mud coming up through the asphalt cracks. Um, College Park is another area that was built on the side of the mountain going up right in front of Stanley Community College. Those streets are in horrible condition and those call for full depth reclamation. So we hear from the taxpayers, we hear from the people that own houses in these neighborhoods on a day-to-day basis. You all probably hear more of the people outside the county and saying, I was driving down P D Avenue.
I hear from that. I think you hear from the citizens.
I don't think you're gonna, you, you, you're not going to hit a home run with whatever street I provide up here. I'm just trying to give you a broad, uh, choice of the top three that politically could probably look okay. But if you look, if you look at the street list of the top $10 million, any, any of those streets would be great to do, in my opinion, but you know, we don't have $10 million.
Well, obviously, East Main and Montgomery Avenue, that's the east-west corridor from one end of the city to the other.
Not East Main, P D.
You mean P D.
P D, I'm sorry. Uh, regardless of what we do with the, it's, it's all based on traffic. And that's, that between east-west, other than going 2427, those are probably the two highly traveled roads in the city. And they're up and down. There's, there's not a straight shot without a hill somewhere. Um, and I agree with you 100% that in our neighborhoods, that's where we have not been able to meet the demand. And that demand is going to continue to escalate just because of the lack of money. And you know which ones I'm talking about? I mean, I've called Hello Dolly since 2013.
I figured you might pick a comment on one of the streets that we've got already.
Uh, you know, and based on what was out previously, when you get to that, uh, that, the one in blue, initially it was the, uh, 27, 28, uh, year. So I'm happy to see some of these come forward. It's going to make these folks happy because they've been driving on crap for a long time. I mean, I took David Bath and our upcoming city manager and drove him through some of these roads, uh, a year ago in the spring. I think it was quite, uh, an eye-opener to go into some of these neighborhoods and think, well, they don't have that much traffic, but they do. So I commend you on really taking a good look at some of these. And, uh, um, in the future, I hope that'll continue to be looked at in more realistic form than what we've been able to do. And I say we, not a particular, uh, department, individuals, nothing, that we need to make sure that we're on the same page, listening to our people.
Mr. Aldrich.
Uh, just a couple of quick comments. You know, when I look at these, uh, look at these three streets and looking at our agenda, I thought we were going to be voting on one of these to, to rec, for our recommendation.
Council has, has adopted a policy that they would not make any decisions on which streets. It would let staff make the recommendation.
Okay. Well, and, and just, just, I'm just reading out the agenda, out of the packet here. Uh, but when I, even before I heard the information about maybe the, the construction on Snugs Park, when I think about P D and Montgomery, uh, and I've driven, I rode both of those streets, uh, yesterday. Um, you know, I look at Snugs Park and, and again, you, Ross, you probably know the, the traffic impact as far as amount of cars on each of these streets every single day. But again, I've caught, I've got more phone calls from constituents over the most recent pavings, which, you know, glad we're doing something and I understand that these have been neglected for many years and we can't repave all the streets. But when I look at this list, I mean, you know, I've heard people on this, you know, on council before say, we're just kicking the can down the road. Well, I mean, if we've got P D Avenue, Montgomery Avenue, and we think, and these are, if it's a factual, if it's factual that these streets are more traveled, are more heavily traveled than Snugs Park, I mean, I'm going to, I'm just going to go out there and say, I would rather see us start with where the most, most impact is. I mean, that's just, I'm just one voice up here because again, you know, and I know we have software and we have technology, but I've got more phone, I've got a lot of phone calls over the last several weeks going, tell me how this development over off Mountain Creek was in more dire straits than one of these streets is on this list. And I say, you know what? We leave that up to, we leave that up to subject, subject matter experts. They make recommendations and they do it. I mean, the good news is we're making progress. Um, but when I look at those three streets, I, I don't, I, I, I would think that Snugs Park is probably the least traveled on a daily basis of those three.
You may be surprised.
I may be.
I mean, I don't know the data. I don't, I don't know. That's why I was saying earlier that it may seem with Snugs Park being more of a rural looking road, it does feed many houses back in that. And I'm going again, I'm going off of what streets we get called to over and over again. We rarely get called to patch potholes on Montgomery Avenue or P D. We rarely do. What the problem with, with, and again, not throwing stones, the issues that you're driving on with Montgomery Avenue and P D is those streets are the old streets of Albemarle where there's concrete panels underneath the, the asphalt. And then you have utilities.
Yeah.
That have been cut and patched and settled. So what you're riding on is not so much potholes where the, the road is just falling apart. It's just over and over utility cuts and patches that have settled over time. We, we very rarely get calls out on those, on P D and Av, uh, Montgomery to go to patch potholes.
Right, so you mentioned it in a full depth, they're going to take that, uh, concrete, grind it up?
That would be, that would be the, the whole purpose of full depth reclamation on those streets, yes. You would, you would grind up the concrete as well.
Thank you. Further questions?
And I would like to add this, and again, if you all remember, we, not to, not to correct the mayor, but the staff does not make the recommendations on the street list. This has been for the past six years, we have gone to our pavement engineer with the software. And it generates a list. And that was something that we decided on years ago to where it kind of took the opinionated pressure off of council and staff. So we would go to our engineers, the, the software, select list. And then we could kind of pick and choose on what made sense. But that's why it goes back to your, your comment on why was this street done when we know we have worse streets? But the answer to that question is, is the worst streets aren't being fixed.
Yeah, well.
Because they're, they're all called for full depth reclamation. Yes, we know that we're fixing streets that aren't our worst, we're just fixing our bad streets. That's been, that's been the plan for three years now.
And I, I won't, I won't.
That's why this year it's changed a little bit that I'm here.
I won't say in a public meeting, which I, I, I get the, the, the engineer and the software and all that, but I, I can't say in a public meeting what some of the comments that I've gotten, um, which, you know, I, I believe in that process, but also that we need to trust and verify, you know, because the comments I get are, well, have you driven down this street? Have you driven down that street? How in the world does this street get paved and this street didn't? And I know, listen, everybody, everybody watching, everybody in this community wants their streets paved yesterday. I get that. Um, but that's why, again, looking at this list, I mean, if, if we know that P D and Montgomery are in worse shape than Snugs Park, you know, with the, the concrete, why?
We get more calls for Snugs Park. That's why I'm making that recommendation.
Yeah.
Mr. Bramble, do you have something?
I, I'm almost afraid to say it, but.
No, you're not.
Yeah. With the huge tax increase, we voted. Why are we doing fewer miles this year than we did last year?
Counsel, I'll, I'll take that one. Counsel, several of you told me, and we talked in another meeting, that we need to start tackling one of these worst roads every year. Spend some money on full depth reclamation. Well, if you do full depth reclamation, you look at it, it's over $500,000. Now, if we did not do that, we could do more mileage, but you're still not doing any of the really bad roads. So that's, that's a council decision. I asked Ross to put this together and bring to you because several of you had asked me to do that. So if you want to change it, that's totally up to council. You can tell Ross to do that and not do an F D R.
So the data from the engineer or software or whatever we've been using the past five or six years, you didn't use that for the full depth reclamation though, did you? Cause the only thing I seen reference was the number of calls that we get at public works. Uh, was that data taken into consideration for these three streets?
No, I haven't talked to our engineer yet this year. It, it, again, if you remember last year, I had a five-year plan built on 1.3 million dollars for five years. I had a five-year street list and now it's, you, council was asking me to change it.
That's what we used to, um, so we simply going off the number of calls that.
I, I went to the 2021 assessment and I looked at our worst streets that, that fell under full depth reclamation from a, a, the C P, uh, the P C I index, pavement condition index study. And again, out of those $10 million worth of streets, these were probably the top three. And again, I'm trying to put my political hat on too, that, that I could feel safe to say, hey, if you want to hit a home run out of the top three streets that's on that list, these would probably be the three that we wouldn't get any complaints over. But I'm also taking into consideration what we go to all the time, what my staff goes to all the time.
And, and just for Dr. Bramble's question about how much and why we're doing less miles, there's a difference in, as you can see, when you have to go all the way down or you're just going to cut. Mill and Field is different than everything else.
If you look at last year's pavement projects compared with, with the contract, the contracted, uh, program and what we did in-house, we, we, we touched, well, again, it was 4.4 miles and 26 streets, 26. This one, we're actually touching 10, 10 streets in, in this year's recommendation. So that $500,000 goes a long way that you're, or 600,000 that you're going to put into an F D R project.
Even with that, it's, uh, it's not a win-win proposition either. Because with this last group of paving, we may have gone down a, a block of one road and then skipped an area on the same road.
And, and if you look at what I, if you look at how I tweaked this year's.
Yeah.
This, this year's recommendation, I, I took that into consideration because yes, we caught some heat on that too. I mean, again, it's.
Yeah, I, I don't.
We're in a no-win situation in paving right now, but it's.
Well, I would certainly say we don't go back to what we just completed and, and, and do bits and pieces. I'd rather for us to, to look at the, look at, you gotta look at the whole and then look at, again, our neighborhoods. That's important. I mean, these are the people that we're here serving day in, day out. They live on those streets, they play on those streets, and we owe it to them to be more involved in how we look at keeping them up to date as much as we can. It's not going to be in my lifetime, I can guarantee you that. But I'm just speaking as one person talking about our neighborhoods. And let's, let's keep the focus where we need to have it and that's with our, with the people.
Well, and that's, that's one thing that the pavement software did. One thing, one thing that they were able to turn on in the software is they were able to hit every, spread out the work throughout the whole city limits of Albemarle. So that way, no one can say, well, you're just focusing on this neighborhood, you're focusing on this neighborhood. It took the, the opinion of staff and council and everything else off that. My friend called me and wants my, my street paved.
Yeah.
And so the, the software did touch, if you look at our last five years of pavement plans, it's touched, it's touched different areas all throughout their city limits, so.
I can give you three ladies that called me and I'd love for, and I'd love for you to talk to them and explain that.
I'm sure I've talked to many more than you have.
Well, I'm sure, but these were three that are highly vocal.
Again, this is, this is a, um.
But I.
It's, it's a struggle because.
We're moving in the right direction. I really think that more so than in the past, and I applaud you for that. Counsel, any more questions?
What, what, uh, I, I'll be honest with you. There's no way I could vote for Snugs Park unless somebody assured us that there would be no damage to that road when we're putting in that water stuff. Because I, I, you see so often a new road built and right the next week, somebody's digging a, a, a line across it to put a water or something in it. And I, I, I just, I just can't stand that.
You also got to take into consideration on Snugs Park, you will, what you're talking about, you're going to see because we've got probably three quarters of a mile that has no water line right now. And once that water line goes in, it's going to open up development. You already got a sign there that talks about housing. It's going to open up development. So there's going to be some cuts regardless of what we do.
Yeah. I just can't, I can't see that.
But back to, we are giving staff the, uh, the authority to do this. And by what I've heard, Ross just heard today about the issue of the water line. So, I mean, it's here before us and we don't, and we're not voting on it. We're letting staff do it, is what I understand.
Any more questions?
Just, just one question, and I'm just thinking about the thoroughfare to and from, um, a downtown area from like East Main. Um, how long has it been since the state done East Main? About two years, hasn't it?
No, it was probably about five years ago. I imagine, I, I would say it's five, maybe six.
Five years, has it been that long?
I, it was, it was before COVID, I believe.
Wow.
Okay.
COVID messed everything up.
I was just trying to think.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ross.
Thanks, Ross.
Or is this an approval or?
We're not voting on it. You proceed with, it's going to be your recommendation, you work with the city manager.
We'll, we'll do a further assessment of what we're dealing with, with the US 52 water line replacement project. And, and we have our new public utilities director and the audience, not whom I'm going to introduce shortly. So, uh, that'll be a conversation we can get into, Ross.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 11B, Resolution 2516, Public Housing Plans and Capital Funds Programs for Physical Year 2025 through 2029. The resolution will include the five-year agency plan, the annual agency plan, the 25 through 29 capital fund program five-year plan, and the 25 capital fund program annual statement. All that is included in Resolution 2516. Mr. Clark, do you have any comments?
Uh, Mayor, Council, I'm happy to review, uh, the memorandum here from our public housing director, Renee, if you'll come up. We can answer some, some questions you may have here, but just, I'll read over this for you as she's coming forward. Um, the agency plan is a comprehensive guide to public housing agency policies, programs, operations, and strategies for meeting local housing needs. There are two parts to the PHA plan. First, the five-year plan, which each public housing authority submits to HUD once every fifth public housing, uh, agency fiscal year, and the annual plan, which is submitted to HUD every year by non-qualified agencies. Qualified agencies are small, less than 550 units, and non-troubled agencies. Uh, our department is submitting the FY 25 through FY 29 five-year agency plan and the FY 25 annual agency plan. Five-year PHA plan describes the agency's mission, goals, and objectives for the agency, as well as provides for the inclusion of certain statutory provisions to address deconcentration and compliance with the Violence Against Women Act. The annual agency plan outlines changes to the operational plan for the agency, along with specific initiatives that may be undertaken during the planned year. The department also developed the. The department also developed a five-year capital fund program plan to address the capital needs for the assets under management and utilize the same public hearing process for this new rolling plan. Also included in the FY twenty-five capital fund program annual statement outlining the budget for the FY twenty-five capital fund program grant. Uh, and finally, all agencies must electronically submit new five-year agency plans for FY twenty-five through twenty-nine, and non-qualified agencies must also submit the FY twenty-five annual agency plan. And two certifications are required for submission. So with that, Renee, will you, uh, fill any missing gaps that you may have?
Um, the agency plan and the five-year plan is a rolling plan. Um, this, this year, um, I just added some objectives to the goals set, um, for the public housing department. Um, basically, we're continuing to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing for our residents, um, in the community and also, um, ensure that we are marketing to all different races and ethnic, ethnic backgrounds. So basically, it's, it's the same plan. I just opened up with some objectives to, um, the mission for, which you can see that on. It should be on page two.
And these plans were sent to city council electronically, uh, last week. So everyone should have a copy of that electronic. Renee, when you're speaking, you feel small. Yeah, thank you. Little, little quiet there.
Counsel, have any questions?
That is correct.
I do have, um, a couple of questions and I actually have a hard copy of it in front of me. And basically going back to the notice of public hearing, and I'm sorry if council members up here are not happy that I'm doing this, but, um, here it is. Uh, besides the public notice, it has to be followed at the newspaper.
That's correct.
What else, what other ways of due diligence do, do we use for the public housing for folks to know that they have a time to come talk?
We put it on the website and we posted it on the public housing office.
So a post on the door?
That is correct.
But no, no, nothing to people individually or anything like that?
We did not. That's not required by HUD.
I, I understand what's required. I understand the notice is to publicize it in the paper. Uh, and I just will tell you that, um, and I've talked with, um, with Darren, with Mr. Rhodes about this. I don't know how this came about and I don't know if this is what was, um, actually publicized. Uh, because the publicized copy is so small, I really can't read it. Um, but the, the information that's on page three, which should probably be what was then publicized, looks like that we had a, some errors, um, in clerical errors. Whenever it was typed, some things did not come out correctly. And I don't know if that's something within the body of, um, somebody's computer or what it is, okay? But I would just would say if things are going for publication, they need to be correct. And I've got it up here with them highlighted if, if you find it.
Um, Mayor Protem, I can answer that question. It did come over from Renee Clear whenever it got sent over to, um, the Sterling County Journal. I, I'm not sure what happened. It ended up getting some dollar signs that were within it.
Yep.
Um, and I went back to them to question and they've had some change in staff. It was during their change from the Sterling News and Press to the New. But they weren't sure what happened because I wasn't able to speak with that person. But the one that I did receive from Renee did not have those in there.
Very good. So it was in transfer from point A to point B to publication?
Yes, ma'am.
That might just be something we follow through with the newspaper about with the cost of publication if that was not published lies like it needed to be. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-five sixteen.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to eleven C, Resolution twenty-five seventeen, is the Housing Choice Voucher Program Plan for Physical Year twenty twenty-five. This includes the Housing Choice Voucher Administrative Plan and the Housing Choice Voucher Program Utility Allowments. Questions for Mr. Clark or Ms. Miller?
Just, and I don't have the papers that, um, um, she emailed to us last week, but I think we still reference in the total number of vouchers at three hundred and something, correct?
That's correct.
And just out of curiosity, I know we technically been utilizing around a hundred and forty.
Forty-one.
Hundred and forty-one, so that's about forty-some percent about allocated. Should we, should we still keep it at the three hundred and something in that?
That is correct. That's the amount that's allocated to public housing by HUD.
HUD gives us the allocation, I understand, but they don't give us enough money to fund all those allocations.
We're gonna get there.
Further questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve Resolution twenty-five seventeen, second. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving to the city manager report. Mr. Clark?
Mayor, allow me, I'm gonna come to the podium up front. I'm gonna ask our new public utilities director to come up and meet me here. Mayor and Council, it's my privilege to introduce Tom Johnson tonight. Uh, Tom is our new public utilities director. And, uh, just to give you a little bit of background on Tom, uh, you may not want me to say this, but you're a graduate of, uh, Ragsdale High School in nineteen eighty-six, uh, from Jamestown, North Carolina. Tom received his Bachelor of Arts in Business Management in nineteen ninety-four from Brookstone College in Greensboro. Uh, he comes to us with more than thirty-five years of experience in the water, wastewater field, uh, working in both the private and municipal sectors. And he has previously led the full development of an advanced metering infrastructure system, which we are currently undertaking. So he's got tremendous experience, uh, coming to us. He, uh, is coming from the city of Lexington where he was Water Resources Utility Director and his primary responsibility is there was responsible for drinking water treatment, wastewater treatment, sewer collection, water distribution. Uh, he had four department managers and a staff of forty-five people. Uh, prior experience, um, is with City of High Point, Winston-Salem, Thomasville, uh, and also, uh, stints with the private sector. So we're very pleased to have Tom with us, uh, and onboard. Today's his first day. Just wanted to formally introduce him to you and give him an opportunity to, uh, share with you some thoughts and also for you to ask some questions, Tom. But Tom, welcome aboard, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. Uh, I can tell you that, um, for, for a new hire experiencing the first day, it's been a, an, an amazing, um, journey. The staff here, your staff is amazing. They've, they've just put out a, a very welcoming and, and, and warm. It's been, it's been really great. So the whole onboarding process has been amazing. So a lot of municipalities could learn from what's going on here. So excited to be a part of the team and jump right in there. And just say to, to Ross, sorry, I didn't tell you about that pipe. So we'll get that.
Well, now that you know about it, you can work with.
Absolutely, yeah.
Counsel, have any questions for Tom?
Welcome aboard.
Welcome, welcome, sir.
Thank you, and we'll get to know you as we move forward, I'm sure.
Yep.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the only thing that I had to bring to you, counsel, tonight. Uh, but have you answered any questions or received comments from the council?
Okay. Counsel, questions, comments for the man?
I just want to say that congratulations to the fire chief. We finished, uh, fire school with nine. I can't see that far.
Eight.
Eight, okay. And of those eight, how many are staying with us? That's what I thought.
Awesome, good deal.
So, um, that was on Friday night. So that was eight new firefighters, so that's a good thing. Um, and they're, they were trained right here, as well as going over to Rowan County some, if I heard correctly. Um, two, if I might, Mayor, um, there are two additional Wampus Caps games. We have the two last ones this week, Thursday and Saturday. Um, our first Wampus Cat baseball, um, player was drafted, number fifty-six or something in the draft, but he was drafted. And it's my understanding Dexter, that we've got a basketball game going on tonight with an Alamoor girl playing.
In Greensboro.
In Greensboro, so good for her. Um, and, uh, and do we have a national night out? Are we gonna try to do that, chief, in, um, August or in October?
October.
Very good, thank you very much. I heard you mention it, but I didn't hear a possible date. Thank you very much. That's all, Mayor.
I have one that, I, I, I was very impressed with the, with the fire graduation. And he says eight, but there was always nine people sitting on that scene and never did figure out quite what was going on there. But they're very impressive young people. I, I just, it just makes you feel good, being an old guy like I am, to see those, those young people come along like that.
Young lady that we graduated for, we've seen, she had graduated in a former class that we hired.
Okay.
She was a real big fair student. So, uh, we hired her and then her Friday night.
Gotcha.
And graduated eight out of class five. So if you did through life, there were nine.
I thought there were.
Firefighters sitting on that bench, just hanging up and for, uh, for being out of the class. We did ten, that's correct. And we have six who inherited first class now and ten that's.
Let me remind people too, uh, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth is, is on the horizon, the anniversary of our country. And there's a lot going on, I guess primarily at the county level, of events that are being planned. I've seen a long list of things. Uh, I just hope, we hope we, our city gets involved with it and we enjoy it and have as much fun as the whole county does.
We have employees assigned to that committee and they're working to.
Okay, good, good, good.
And, and I guess I would like to see a list of those potentials. If the next time there's a meeting, if somebody can make that report to us, I would really love to see that.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything further, Council, Council? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, August the fourth.
No move.
At six-thirty PM, motion by Councilmember Bramble.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.